For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening, welcome to Alpena City Council Meeting, July 3, 2017. Come to the order, please.
Johnson?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Noack?
Here.
Sexton?
Excused.
Walgura?
Sorry, interrupt.
I'm here. Please rise from the podium. The question, ladies and gentlemen?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any modifications to the agenda this evening? Approval of the minutes for regular session of June 19, 2017, and closed session of June 19, 2017. Issues, changes, additions? Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items will each allow five minutes to address your concerns. If you do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records. This is the only time during our meeting that citizens will be allowed to address On the consent agenda this evening, A, bills to be allowed in the amount of $928,795.01. B is the approval of the Huron Humane Society fundraiser on July 22, 2017. C is a budget amendment, ambulance department, 20,000 carryover of monitor defibrillators to 2017-18 fiscal year. And D is the approval of fresh pallets request for noise variance from 10:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. on July 8, July 28, August 5, and August 19 for music in the alley. I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Walgura?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. No presentations, announcements, proclamations, or hearings. We'll go down to 12, communications and petitions. First up is A, Duffy Gorski, All Hands on Deck, protect the Great Lakes.
My name is Duffy Gorski. I live at 746 State Avenue. I'm also the captain of the first rally of All Hands on Deck at Starlight Beach. It took place this morning at 10 o'clock between 10 and 11. We had 60-some people show up and addressed their concerns relevant to protecting our Great Lakes. Our Great Lakes are one of the largest surface area waters in the world. They provide 84% of United States freshwater. They supply 21% to municipalities around the Great Lakes in the United States. I don't know how much they supplied to Canada. There are over 30 million people that drink water out of the Great Lakes. As we know, the budgets for the Great Lakes Initiative have been cut, or are planning to be cut, and I believe that that cut will greatly reduce the value of our Great Lakes in terms of usability and increase expenses because as the lakes become more and more polluted, it costs more and more money to clean our water to drink. And there's some pretty scary stuff going in. I don't want to get into that. I want to stick with the idea of All Hands on Deck. It was to promote their awareness that this is happening, and I'm here today to ask you to individually sign a pledge that you will protect the Great Lakes and provide protection for the sciences that protect them. And I think there was a pledge in your packets. If not, I have one I can give you.
Yeah, we do. Yeah, we have it.
Right. And I'd just like to know individually if you'd like to sign that pledge.
If I may, can you just briefly explain to us, since you've come this way, to just explain what exactly it means on a simplistic basis to base our decisions on sound science? Because that's what the pledge is for. It's asking us to make all of our decisions that affect the Great Lakes, base them on unbiased, sound science.
Yes, that is exactly what it is.
Can you give me just a little bit more information into exactly what that means?
What it means is that when somebody comes to you and states and shows proof that the systems that we have in place in regards especially to our storm drains is polluting the Great Lakes, and someone comes with information that shows how to solve some of that, that you will work to reach that goal, that you will say, these are valuable to us, we need to do the studies, we need to understand what's going on, and then we need to form a system to help solve the problem. That's basically what it says.
Okay, I understand. Okay, we each have it, and I'm gonna, there wouldn't be a council action on this as a whole. This is for us to acknowledge on our own as elected officials, as Duffy has asked, and I think there's even a somewhere for us to send this, if we choose to, or do we just, we have your contact information for sure?
You have my contact information. I can collect the pledges and give you a copy to keep, whatever you wish to do.
Okay. Does everybody agree with that, to, we'll just make that decision as individuals, as elected officials? Is that right?
Correct me if you don't see it any other way.
No, no, it's an individual decision whether you want to state what you're gonna do now or not, it's up to you.
Okay.
Say if you're gonna do it, do it this week, so it can be forwarded to Duffy.
Okay. All right. I'm not gonna call anybody out if that's what you're wondering.
Right, that's fine.
I would just assume everybody did it.
I'm just here to ask you to do it. I'm here to say, these waters, I'm gonna give you an example. Right now, some of the statistics that are coming out on how much the, I want to say it right, this amount of salt that's in the Great Lakes has been increasing and increasing and increasing. If this keeps happening, it may not be tomorrow, but our grandchildren may see sharks swimming in the lake because the saltwater value has changed that much. We don't realize, I'm gonna give you an example, in the city of Alpena, a rough statistic, when we get one inch of rain on 64 miles of roads, just the road surfaces, I'm not talking about the parking lots, the rooftops, and all that that goes into our drain system, that's 800 billion gallons of water. One inch of water on your streets.
Wow, okay.
Do the math.
Okay, yeah.
Thirty-three, thirty, I took 30 feet wide, it's a rough number, 30 feet wide, one mile, figure out the cubic feet, multiply it by 64, divide it by X number of gallons per cubic foot.
Yeah.
It boggles your mind. Now, that salt pile you see, every year it goes in your lake. Every year it goes in your lake.
And just for the record, because I saw, like, it was either a letter to the editor or maybe it was on social media, that salt pile, nor do the property belong to the city of Alpena.
No, I'm not talking about the pile itself.
Right. But we obviously use it for our roads.
Yes, right.
I just want to clarify that that pile itself, it does not belong to the city of Alpena, nor do we regulate the runoff from it or anything of that nature.
Right, yes, well, the, uh, I'm.
But I understand, we do use, we do use the product.
Now, think of Detroit, think of Chicago, Cleveland, whatever other big cities. Our Great Lakes are in trouble, and that's why I'm asking you to say, I will protect them.
Okay. Well, thank you Duffy.
Thank you.
And I think we'll each do our research and determine individually whether we're ready to make that pledge. I appreciate you coming and taking the time.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
We had a great turnout.
Great, that's good to hear.
Or you're gonna see some pictures from the.
I'm sure I will.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Okay, next up is a resolution of support for shutting down Enbridge Line 5 oil pipeline under the Straits of Mackinac. Forgive me for a second until I find it. I have the resolution, it's a bit lengthy, so please bear with me. A resolution of support for shutting down the Enbridge Line 5 pipeline under the Straits of Mackinac, whereas Line 5 is a set of twin 60. I'm sorry, Bob.
No, I was confused.
It's not, no, we have a paper copy of the last one.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what you did.
This is the current one. I only have it on my laptop right now, sorry. 63-year-old pipelines owned by Enbridge that carry light crude oil and natural gas under the Straits of Mackinac, and whereas the currents in the Straits of Mackinac at a peak volumetric transport can be more than 10 times greater than the flow of the Niagara Falls and switch bidirectionally from east to west every few days, and according to a 2014 University of Michigan study, are the worst possible place for an oil spill in the Great Lakes, and whereas the Great Lakes contain 20% of the world's fresh available surface water and are a drinking water source for over 35 million people, and whereas one of, one out of every five jobs in Michigan is linked to the high quality and quantity of fresh water in the Great Lakes, and whereas tourism is one of Michigan's largest income industries, bringing in billions of travelers' dollars spent each year, and whereas agriculture, fisheries, shipping, and industry depend on the health of the Great Lakes, and whereas in 2009, the Great Lakes were linked to over 1.5 million jobs, with Michigan accounting for 35% of those jobs, and whereas Enbridge has a shaky track record that includes 1,244 reportable spills, leaks, and releases from 1996 to 2013, and whereas Enbridge was in violation for their spacing requirements of its 1953 easement to the Line 5, and was responsible for a pinhole leak and a section of the pipeline north of the Straits in December of 2014, and whereas Enbridge was reasonable for one, responsible, I'm sorry, Enbridge was responsible for one of the worst and most expensive inland oil spills in U.S. history when Line 6B ruptured near Kalamazoo in 2010, allowing almost 1 million gallons of tar sands oil to leak for 17 hours before shutting down the line, and whereas corrosion is the number-one reason that pipelines fail, and there is no plan for how to recover oil if there was a leak during the winter when the lakes are covered with ice, and whereas Line 5 was built before the Great Lakes Submerged Land Act was adopted, so it didn't have to obtain the permit and ensure that the pipeline wouldn't pose a threat to the waters or the public's use of waters, and whereas Michigan's Attorney General Bill Shute has stated in regards to Line 5, that the pipeline wouldn't be built today and that the pipeline's days are numbered, and whereas the Coast Guard Commandant testified before Congress in 2015 that the Coast Guard would be unable to respond effectively to an open water oil spill in the heart of the Great Lakes, and whereas, and whereas as Michigansians, we have a responsibility to be wise stewards of the waters of our state and for generations to come, and whereas protection of Michigan's water supplies and resources is better accomplished by prevention of contamination and environmental degradation rather than attempting to clean up contamination and restore degraded environments after the fact, and now therefore be it resolved that on the third day of July 2017, Alpena supports the stopping of transportation of oil under the Great Lakes, and be it further resolved that Alpena supports shutting down Line 5 and the flow of oil under the Great Lakes, and be it further resolved that Alpena supports H.R. 182 and C.R. 15 introduced by State Representative Sarah Roberts and Jeff Erwin, and S.R. 119 introduced by State Senator Steve Beeta, calling on Governor Rick Snyder and Attorney General Bill Shute to shut down Line 5, and be it further resolved that Alpena will send a letter to Governor Rick Snyder, Attorney General Bill Shute, our State Representatives, State Senators, and U.S. Senators, calling on them to take swift action to shut down Line 5. So, I don't know what discussion you have, I do have a couple of points that I'd like to make, but I can wait for council if you like. With the limited time that we had, when I first saw this about a week ago, and then I reached out a copy of it earlier in the week, I did a little bit of research. I'll tell you, I've got a lot of issues with it. Some of them deal directly with what is specifically stated in the resolution itself. I have trouble as an elected official and as a government to specifically state that a company has a shaky track record, I really don't like the wording in that, and 1,244 reportable spills and leaks during that time period could really have been anything, a reportable leak or a reportable spill could be an employee walking with a bucket and dropping it or something like that, so I really don't. That statement, I feel, is a little bit misleading at best. Down towards the end, House Resolution 182 and C.R. 15 and Senate Resolution 119 were, actually, I tried to find them through the MML and was emailed back that they were from last session and they no longer exist. We would be, I feel it would be a little bit unusual for us to support three introduced pieces of legislation that no longer exist. Now granted, they have been replaced by two others, and I didn't, I kind of compared what they said, they're relatively similar, but there's, so, and then with the last statement as far as who would write and send this letter to our legislators, I'm not really sure who would do that, but, so those are some issues that I have with the document itself, with the general thought of us calling on our state government to just broadly shut down a pipeline, I'm just not comfortable with that. I don't feel that as a small board, we're really educated in what that, what the ramifications are for that, to be sure, and obviously, it's on the state level. Before, today, forgive me for using my phone, but it was just in the Free Press the other day, because we signed this resolution the last time, and I was, I was comfortable with that, you know, I called for, I called for, calling on an authority to, you know, to study it and to limit the amount of petroleum that was going through it, and so right now, the report was released on Thursday by Pipeline Risk Management Consultants, Dynamic Risk, and quite frankly, I have no idea, I know nothing about this consultant, I don't know, I don't know anything about him. I do know that they, that they released it, indicated that the existing underwater pipelines in the Straits could operate indefinitely, and nobody wants to hear that, that a report says that it could operate indefinitely. Andrew Point, and obviously that drew a strong disagreement from Bill Shute, who is in the process of doing some of the things that are on this resolution, and whether he's, you know, what his, what his motivation is to do that is really not for me to judge, so quite frankly, I have very little issues with signing the one that we did last fall. I've got quite a few with this one, so I'm probably, I'm gonna be opposed to signing this resolution to shut down Line 5. I know that our state government is looking for and have other teams that are looking for what the best, what the best replacement is for it, one of them obviously being a tunnel, to have a pipeline in a tunnel in the ground under the Great Lakes, and whether, you know, whether I'm for that, I'm just not educated enough to know these things, quite frankly. I'm dealing with, I deal with a lot of local things, and then we obviously do deal with our legislators on the state level, but I'm just not educated enough on this, and that's just where I am. I don't know where you guys are, how your feelings are about it, but that's where I'm gonna be today.
That's exactly how I feel. I just feel that nobody really knows, and I certainly don't, and I don't feel that hamstringing anybody on this issue is the right thing to do right now.
I kind of did the same thing that the mayor did, just kind of did some research on some different items and stuff like that, said it is a resolution of support, you know, and I would be comfortable with support for our state government looking deeply into that and whether alternatives are. Very comfortable with that, you know, some of the things in here as well, I'm not very comfortable with just because it's putting that stress on shutting it down, and we are a smaller, you know, entity. For myself, it's the same way, I'm very, I was strongly in supportive and always have been of, you know, testing, and I am gonna be one of those that's always like, I prefer that there be no pipelines going across our Great Lakes, you know, that's just me environmentally. My one thing is, where that is, is that I'm not comfortable with a 10% cleanup at best of any spill, so I'm never gonna be comfortable with that, but at the same time, I think the support and the research and the education that I don't have, I would have to agree with that too. There's so many things in here that are just misleading, not a comfortable statement. I mean, we'd be better off, we came as a board, coming up with resolutions to investigate alternatives to, you know, piping water through the Great Lakes or something like that, I would be more comfortable with than some of the statements that are in here as well, so that's where I'm standing.
Who gave us this resolution?
Janet.
I did.
Oh, you did? Okay, okay. And I am with the mayor and, well, the other council members on this. There is some language in here that I don't like. Personally, I would like to see this shut down, but I know it would be a travesty for Michigan if we had a spill, and we're playing Russian roulette, I understand that, but there are a lot of things in here that point fingers at people that, and it doesn't move the conversation forward, in my opinion. And I kind of would like to see a resolution that we work toward solutions rather than...
Solutions and alternatives.
Yeah.
And I can, I can respect that, what you're saying, and certainly that resolution that I presented to you could be tweaked. I actually have in my possession eight resolutions of 64, I would've brought you 64, but my printer ran out of ink, and these are resolutions that have our calling for the shutdown of Line 5. Some of them are more uniquely written to represent the values of the townships or communities from which they're sourced, but they all reference the immense tragedy that would take place, given what would happen in our Great Lakes, and certainly, the language in a resolution, I don't think, I mean, you can, you can change it, you can fix it, but what would happen in our Great Lakes cannot be fixed. So, I mean, this is, this is how I feel, and there are thousands of other people in this state, businesses, faith-based communities, I can give you lists, I can give you names, you can do your own research, but the scientific and technical research right now proves that there is an unacceptable risk to our Great Lakes. So, I simply ask you to respect that and to please give this a little further consideration. If you like these, I would be happy to give them to you.
I was just gonna suggest if, whether with staff, one or two council members, if you have ideas, how you like the wording, that we could come up with a different type of a resolution that basically council is more likely to be able to support, if that's something you want to do.
I guess I wouldn't be, I really, I really don't want to put this in staff's hands for staff to be dealing with this, but I appreciate the thought. For me, if.
Working with council.
Yeah, but really, it's, staff, staff is, staff has a lot to do for what each one of their, already doing five jobs for one person, but if someone would like to, you know, if someone would like to change it or make it more acceptable from the dialogue that we've had, I mean, I honestly, I think, I think the devastation that a rupture in that line would have on the Great Lakes started the day it went into operation. I mean, that's, that's the risk we take with sending a man to the moon, that's the risk that we take with satellites and oil and refineries and DPI and Lafarge and all these companies that are, that have, that have questionable contamination on our, on our environment, but at the same time, we rely on this oil and those, and there's thousands of people that rely on the jobs as well, and so, and I understand, I understand where you're coming from, but at the same time, for me, to say, I want that line shut down, let's say that all of us say we want the line shut down, and so that we put enough pressure on the governor, and he says, okay, fine, every government in the state of Michigan wants it shut down, their citizens are saying, shut it down, they shut it down with no alternative whatsoever, imagine, if you will, what would happen. So, that's, I feel safe at night that the pipeline is, is fine in its current state. Do I agree with this report that it's, that it could be indefinite? No, I really don't, and I'm not opposed to them finding an alternative source or an alternative way to do it, but to just call for the shutdown of Line 5, I'm just not in favor of it. I think you, it sounds like, if I'm understanding what you're saying, that you'd be comfortable if a resolution said to seek alternates to Line 5 before. Absolutely, absolutely, and the, and the resolution that I believe that some wording was in it to, to hold them to their responsibility of the recommendations from the pipeline task force, which arguably, and if there were enough people in the room, they would argue all day as to whether any of them have been fulfilled or not, because a lot of the reports in the Free Press say that some of them have been, and the resolution, I think, at some point was saying that they haven't. So, it's, it's just complicated, and so to continue looking for alternative sources, absolutely, to hold them to what the task force that our government tax dollars paid for, absolutely. Just a broad shutdown Line 5, I just, I'm not supporting it, so. I guess that's where I am.
And then what? It's nonproductive, as I said, it hamstrings every effort to get it right if you just shut it down. And then what?
So, we certainly, it seems as though the four of us aren't gonna pass this resolution this evening, so, and what we, what, if someone wants to take that task to bring something back, you know, absolutely, I would never say that anyone couldn't at any point, and please leave, please leave yours, we may be able to use those as some kind of a draft opportunity, so, but to get this off of our table, to take, so we can take action, I'll recommend that we, that someone propose that we, that we. Table of revisions? Well, I want to get this, I want to get, this has been brought to us in its current state, and Bill can correct me if I'm wrong, but what I would suggest is that someone, someone move to, to support this resolution that's been brought before us, and one seconds it, and then we take a vote on it, and that way the vote will be, it will be what they've come to ask for. So, if that makes any sense. And because we all know that just because you propose something and second it, doesn't mean you, you're gonna vote yes or no, we just need to get it to a voting stage. Yep. So move.
Second.
Noack?
No.
Walgura?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Nielsen?
No.
Next up is C, request to apply for a community impact grant from the Community Foundation of North East Michigan. I didn't ask, who has that?
I do. I do, that's mine.
Seven minutes, okay.
This, this goes to the Chisholm Street Pocket Park, and we'll bring this project to you soon. This is a project that is going to take place in that park, and it's spearheaded by Doug Pratt. We have been collecting or getting donations for the park. DDA has given us $7,500. We've gotten about $7,500 in donations from private people. And Tim Koonline is going to apply for a grant from the Community Foundation on the city's behalf. And we would just be the fiduciary, so it would come through the city, and we can get up to $5,000 on that grant. And it's due the 15th. So, what, we're just looking for support so he can do that.
Is that, we're talking about the park where the mural is?
Yes.
Okay.
Owned by the DDA.
The DDA owns the park.
Yeah, we've done fiduciary where we've been for grants elsewhere, where all we are is a pass through. Basically, we have to file a couple of reports, you know, at the end. It's not anything that's going to be out of the ordinary. I'm not sure who would take care of, you know, whatever reports they need, whether it be myself, engineering, or even the planning department, we'll work that out in turn. It's not that big of a deal.
And that, so the, so the DDA is overseeing the improvements and the things that...
Yes, we are. Yes, we are.
No questions? So, I move, we approve the request from Tim Koonline to apply for a grant for the Community Foundation of Northeast Michigan on the behalf of the city.
Second.
Walagura?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next up is the D. County of Alpena amended interlocal agreement. Cindy as well.
As you may know or read in the paper, the IG Recycling Board went to the county and asked them to eliminate opt-outs for many reasons. The money will be well spent in the recycling. We have reached a point in recycling where we've grown to the point where we've outgrown our building. Now, we have to make investments in machinery to try to help us get the materials through the facility that we have as quickly as we can and get them to market. But we seriously have to look at doing something about that. So, this money will be well spent to help us to achieve that, and it will also save the city and all of the township's money in processing these opt-outs. So, the county approved that at their meeting, so we need to sign a new interlocal government agreement. And this will be the last time that we have to sign this. Over the last few years, I keep coming back, I keep coming back. And the reason I have to keep coming back is because of the opt-outs. That the townships, in this last time, only wanted a two-year agreement. Before that, we had a three-year agreement. So, the opt-outs keep me coming back, asking you to keep approving this. With that, with those two articles out of there, this, and a deadline on this agreement, it's this agreement until somebody changes it, which is...
So, when I vote on the opt-outs or anything, yeah, literally just approving our interlocal agreement, the county, the county issue and...
Yes.
It does permit either the county or the, any individual township or the city to opt out of it.
By September 1st.
Yeah, yeah. So that, because it has to be on the winter tax bill. So, if they wanted to opt out, then they wouldn't collect it in that township. Those people would be ineligible to utilize the pens and so forth.
They would just opt out as a township?
Right. They would have to do it that way.
And it seems to have support from, it seems to have had overwhelming support from everyone, so I can't imagine that happening. But it was, to clarify, it was the county was the authority to, to, to opt out of the opt-out?
Yes, the county, yes. The county is the one who put the opt-out in the agreement, and it's part of the, it's part of the law. You can use that. We are the only county in the, in the entire state who, who used that clause. But yes, this is their waste management agreement with us.
It's not that we didn't support it because they asked us first.
Right, kind of. It's complicated. The opt-outs, what happened with recycling when they, to put the opt-outs in, is you had a group of people who wanted to recycle, and you had a vocal group of people who didn't want to pay the surcharge. This was way back in 2011 for the county to move forward with recycling and try to make both sides happy. That's where the opt-outs came in.
And I think Greg said that ours was 7% or something like that, so...
Yeah, it varies between, from six to eight percent, but I think the average was 11%.
I think that's, for me, that's overwhelming support of the program.
And it's, it doesn't seem like much, but it was coming up to, I don't know, over $7,000 from the city opt-outs, and the township was actually a little bit more. So, just between those two, you had $15,000 or more. And if you do in all the other townships, you're over 20, and that's a, in the end, it's a significant amount of funding that isn't available.
Okay. All right. I move, we approve the amended interlocal agreement with the county.
Second.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Walagura?
Hi.
Okay, some unfinished business is the trapping, spaying, and neutering abandoned cats by the group TNR. Don't think that they're here today. I, we did, this was introduced to us a couple of meetings ago. Everyone got a copy of the county's signed document saying that they didn't, they took it up, didn't have any issues with it. I think Cindy was at their meeting as well. So, it's back to us for approval. We did, how did you, how did we end that conversation about, there was such, this is like a, this is like a statement that they're going to make or their, and it's, there was a little bit of a, maybe a miscommunication that Cindy and I were discussing, that their mission is to trap, neuter, and return. R is right in there, in their name, and the training tells the trainees to take them back to the area, but it, right in red, in large letters, it says, again, if we trap a friendly cat without a collar, it may not return, be returned to the area. That cat will be placed into a shelter to find it a home, which wasn't something that we were initially thought that the program was for and...
And I can tell you that here in Humane Society, that's not what we thought this program was. This was just a program to help with the ever-growing cat population out there, to keep them from coming to us, but it wasn't a program that we're taking them. This was an outside group that was supposed to be trying to help control the cat population, not bring them to us. That, that happens too easily already.
And since neither of them fall under our direct, well, I guess that here in Humane Society does, because we have two board members, or at least one assigned and one that just happens to be on, so, I don't know, Bill, I...
Yeah, I can tell you that I'm not comfortable with that statement.
I want it to keep coming back, so I would like to pass this with, with our council members going back to the, to that, to the Humane Society Board and making sure that they get this clarified with them. Does that sound reasonable or...
I think that sounds reasonable. Certainly, you know, what was presented to us and what I took a look at legally was whether we could do this. But there was no understanding that, you know, the cats would be placed in a shelter. That's, that's directly opposite of what the program is designed to do. So...
I think, I just put it, if you pass it, is that with the exception of that, that any trapping done in, within the city, those animals, cats, do not go to the Humane Society. They are, they are trapped, they're neutered, they're clipped, and they're returned, you know, in the wild, in the, into the city.
Up to the place you got them.
Right. And so, that's what they, that's what would happen, and that they not be added to the, probably, the excessive population they already have of cats at the shelter. And I would just make that clear. And if they are not doing that, then you could always rescind the approval later.
Okay. Does it sound reasonable? Because this is like, this says attention cat owners.
And that they need to change that. If that's something they're handing out, that wording needs to be changed before they start doing that.
Okay. Maybe probably, so someone should probably get on that right away. Maybe Cindy, because you have the most direct contact with the Humane Society. So, if somebody wants to word that into that, well, let's take a look at that.
I move, we allow the Northeast Michigan TNR group to trap, spay, neuter, and return feral cats in the city of Alpena, with the exception on their agreement here that, again, if a cat, a friendly cat, without a collar is returned, not taken to the shelter. However, you're going to make that sound smart. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you. Awesome.
And I'll second that.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Walagura?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next up is new business, a resolution to authorize the city to contract with MDOT for signal modifications at US 23 North and Second Avenue.
Yeah, as part of the proposed conversion of Second Avenue to a two-way street system, we will need to hand modifications made to the traffic signal at Second Avenue and Chisholm Street. And we requested information from MDOT a number of months ago. They felt that they were ready to go, and then we kind of dragged our feet on it, which we did, and rightfully so, because we weren't ready to do it at that time. So, this time, they, they have requested that we pass a resolution, basically just to stay with Karen, that this was approved by city council, authorizing the city to contract with MDOT for the work to be done and agree to reimburse MDOT for all costs associated with the signal modification. At this time, they have estimated about $5,500. And that was an estimate from last year, so it may be slightly higher than that, but we have that funding budgeted in our capital improvement program to make it happen, so...
Excellent. Just the only quick question I had, is there other things that have to come before us with that that authorize the, you know, the change over Second Avenue, some of the work and contracting? Is that going to be within this next few months?
Yeah, right now, our target is for September to mid-September, to late September to make that, all that transition all happen. This will allow MDOT sufficient time to get in there and get their work done, that line can operate independent. There is some striping that will need to be done on the other side of Chisholm Street, on the west side of Chisholm Street, as part of this, just plain markings to redirect traffic, so...
Now, will the parking on the west side of Chisholm Street remain parallel parking? Or is there any...
No. Yes, it will be parallel. There is not going to be any reverse angle parking. There's, I've had a number of people come up to me and say, how are you going to do reverse angle parking on Second? That has never been the intent.
And everything on the west side is that the state controls, we're doing nothing, but changing the arrows on the lanes that we're in our package.
Actually, that's going to, it'll probably have to be modified a little bit, but we'll work with MDOT on that.
Excellent, yeah.
Okay.
I move, we authorize the work on the traffic signal at US 23 and Second Avenue and reimburse MDOT for the cost that is presented.
Second.
Thank you.
Noah?
Yes.
Walagura?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
I move, we adjourn to closed session to discuss water civil litigation.
Second.
Walagura?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?